To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we have a swearing in of the mayor and trustee Baker.
Is it working?
Yep. I thought I'd go like this.
I, George Ray Rivers.
I, George Ray Rivers.
Dues solemnly swear.
Dues solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you, ma'am.
I, Frances J. Baker.
I, Frances J. Baker.
Dues solemnly swear.
Dues solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, ma'am.
I'll have to sign this.
Yeah, that's right. At this time I have a public hearing on amending the sewer rates. I will open the meeting to the public for amending the sewer rates. You want to read that resolution? Oh, my God, you don't want to read that resolution. It's three pages long. See, just for information, what we are doing is that we are lowering the sewer rates $2.04 and raising the water rates $2.04 so it's an even wash. No increase whatsoever. And the reason for that is so that start paying the state back for mandate that so they so lowly put onto us.
All these things are self-sufficient, our kid water, sewer, and electric.
Yeah, they don't, nothing comes out of general fund for them.
Right, your living use.
No one wishing to address this on that, I will close the section on sewer rates. We also have legal notice and a public hearing on a tentative budget. The notice is hereby given to the budget for Village of Roses Point for the year June 1, 2008 to May 31, 2009, has been completed by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Roses Point. And a copy therefore is filed in the office of the village clerk where the scene will remain open to the public. Inspection door and the office hours of hours until April 7 at 7:00 PM when a public hearing will be held to consider the budget before final adoption. The hearing will be held in Alstead Hall Civic Center, 39 Main Street, Roses Point, New York. And the mayor will be P. 10-4 and each trustee will be P. 4-703. It's open to the public and anybody wishes to comment.
I have a question.
What is for it?
In the newspaper today, salary increases. It says the budgets that accepted elected officials will see 4% increase. We're still negotiating their wages with the union. You don't belong to the union.
Not us. What what has done is that was a 4% increase for all non-union people. And that is already set place in the budget. They are, we are in negotiations with the union as we speak.
It's just a mis-
Well, it's the way the guy credited it.
Misworded.
He misworded, that's right.
That guy couldn't quite tell him that.
No. And that's, when we did a budget, of course, the union has, I think it's this week, does you have a meeting?
We do have a meeting this week?
Yeah.
Yeah, their contract begins again in June. So it's expiring on May 31st.
Any other questions? If not, I will close the public hearing on a budget. You want me to, you want to have a vote on those?
If you want to do the other one.
You might just as well know now and there's no objection.
Can I have a question? Can I add an asset question?
Sure.
There's a list of paving of the streets.
Yes, ma'am.
Who determines what streets get paved? How bad they are or how?
No, I believe that we had more than, we went out and bid for more streets than what's in the in the budget. And I think the superintendent took that, streets. A couple of them have cut out because he said we shouldn't pay them, basically to give it another year to settle.
With Priscilla Lane, I still get asked about that. Where my sister lives.
Priscilla Lane's got a base coat.
Base coat only, yeah.
Yeah.
That's never been paid, make good question. I don't know, wait till we find out.
Good answer. And that's how it's determined. I think, what, we're doing four streets, Harson? I don't have it, I don't know, I think it's four streets we're doing, yeah, this year. Which is, what, about five? We're doing five of them.
That one where, you know, the belt went up for, the deacon is spot for it, that's, that's one of them.
What Haven?
Yes.
Through Liberty Street, Lower Washington Avenue, with Haven, Mountain Drives, and Dumby Street.
Woody was just like, oh.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'll make a motion to amend the sewer rates for 2008.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, and it's a roll call vote, and trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, and now I need a resolution for the budget.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2008 tentative budget.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. And this is a roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
George, we should read, we should read the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Harson, that's your message. I will have it in front of me.
No, no, we're talking about the resolution.
Oh. Oh, okay, yeah. Okay. Resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year concerning, commencing June 1, 2008 and ending May 31, 2009. Making the appropriations for, for the conduit of the village government and the establishment of rates of compensation for officers, employees for such period. Whereas the Board of Trustees has met at a time and place specified in the notice of a public hearing on a tentative budget. And heard all persons desired to be heard. Therefore, it is resolved that the tentative budget is hereby set forth, hereafter set forth, hereby adopted. Several amounts slated in the column and title adopted in Schedule 1A through Schedule 2E. Through and with the amount set forth in the budget summary by the funds found on page two. And hereby appropriated for the object and the purpose specified. The salaries and wages stated in Schedule 6 will be effective June 1, 2008 for all employees. The union employee's salary and wages are negotiated through assigned labor contract with the Civil Service Employees Association. And I have the motion made and seconded, and it's a roll call vote. Is there any discussion, board? Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Baker. And the mayor votes aye. Okay, you'll have minutes of the previous regular meeting of March 17 and the regular meeting of March 19. Is there any additions or deletions?
I have actually one change. On the minutes of the meeting of the 19th, I was listed as present and I was not there.
Oh, I see.
That's okay.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Any other corrections? If not, entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to entertain the meeting, regular meeting of March 17 and March 19 as amended.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. You all have copies of the bills? Is there any additions or deletions, Harson?
We have one addition. The check is payable to C-2 RP, which is the shared services committee. It's the $5,000 startup cost that they're asking for for our shared services agreement.
Do you all make a motion to pay the bills tonight as amended?
Um, just to give you a heads up on that $5,000, that's reimbursable. Will be reimbursed on that. That's coming from the grant. You made a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Yeah, I just want to ask one question. On page five, the 444-54 phone support for April. I've never seen a bill like that before. Aye, John?
Well, that's our, that's our, that's our support for our meter, we need system. It's a quarterly support.
Oh, okay, all right, just, I hadn't seen that. Okay, thank you.
But I hope we only pay it four times a year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The first letter I received from the town of Shaysee. Dear Mayor Rivers, the Town Board of Shaysee has authorized me to contact surrounding towns and municipalities to see if there is an interest in a shared service agreement. This agreement would be to be able to supply each municipality with water to be transported by appropriate transport supplied by the meeting town as suggested by the Department of Public Services. Should a town need such water due to contamination or other reason beyond their control. Each town would agree to supply water at no cost for this emergency time period. Could you please let me know if the village of Roses Point would be willing to enter into an agreement with the town of Shaysee for this purpose? With details to follow. On behalf of the Shaysee Town Board, I thank you for this consideration. Stop Spiegel, supervisor.
Just a comment on that. There is a drive out there now in the state of New York by V O H, which is the Department of Health, and several other state agencies to form a mutual aid system for water and sewer, excuse me, like the fire service has. So I don't know if the supervisor from the town of Shaysee is aware of that, but I received that the other day at my email and I've given it to Gary to look it over. I don't, and it's going to be some sort of an association that this will take place in. I will contact the supervisor down there and make him aware of this. I don't have any hire for this, really. You know, we did it, we did it for the village of Shaysee, we had no problem. Certainly, it's not, we could probably end up in the same boat sometime, who knows?
How about if we pass it and then?
I would just let that sit for 10 years.
Okay, great.
I want to talk to him to get more information on it.
Okay.
Okay? Boy, we're in fine shape tonight.
The next item I have is from the Northeastern Clinton Central, Joey Gilroy. Dear Mayor, Northeastern Clinton Central School District would like to request the use of the Roses Point tennis courts located at the Civic Center. The requested times would be Monday through Friday, 3 o'clock to 5:15 PM, beginning March 18 through May 31. The matches start the week of April 21. We request that the windscreen be put up prior to that date if possible. Thank you for your years of support.
I'll make a motion to allow the Northeastern Clinton tennis team to use tennis courts here at the Civic Center.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield, discussion. The windscreen will not be put up. Not until after June. The new budget goes into effect, the screen is so badly ripped that they got a new one coming, but it's in the new budget. And I talked to Mike today about it, and he says there's no sense of spending the money to put that old screen up, he says it's useless. So he said that as soon as, soon as the budget's approved, they'll get this on order, and it'll be June 1 before they get it.
We might want to let the school know that because there will be days probably when the courts will be not playable without the windscreen. So they might just want to be aware of that, so.
But that's it, the only comment I had, I talked to him today about it.
They could have that here earlier also too, if they order and have the bill sent back to them first.
Well, I'll talk to Mike.
If they're going to do that.
Yeah. Thanks, Harson. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is from Armit's Place 2. As per alcoholic beverage control law, Section 64 and 109, it is our requirement to inform you of our intent to renew our liquor license for a two-year term. The liquor license serial number is 2004276. The new term begins June 1, 2008, expiring on May 31, 2010. Thank you, Pat Donatelli, President DeMar Corporation for Armit's Place.
As for information on that board, no action necessary.
That was certified, by the way. The next letter I received was from Kimberly McGoldrick. I would like to thank you for the use of the Roses Point Recreation Center. I have sent a copy of our insurance. I also would like to tell you that we will have enough adults on the grounds. We will have 15 adult leaders and their spouses. There is one other question I would like to approach, and that is if it would happen to rain that day, would it be possible to move everything inside? It would be very hard to cancel something so big because of the weather. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
You've got a date?
May 31st.
No, not a problem.
I believe it was May 31, I think it was May 31st. I don't have, I'm almost positive that was the date. That's the one we approved at the last meeting. So did you want to override it?
I want to make a motion to allow the, is it the Girl Scouts or the?
Yes, it's Girl Scouts.
In case it rains, to let them use inside rec center on May 31st.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next letter I received to the mayor and board trustees was from Timothy and Deborah Mottot, 60 State Street. At the zoning board meeting of September 10, 2007, during a discussion specific to the residential law at 62 State Street, the code enforcement officer stated that non-residential parking on a lot zoned residential was against the zoning code. Present at the meeting were representatives of American Legion Post 912, the owner of the law at 62 State Street. At the next zoning meeting on October 9, 2007, again during a discussion specific to the law at 62 State Street, the subject of parking was again discussed. Board member Tim Lindkort cited the specific section of the zoning code which prohibited non-residential parking in a lot zoned residential. Mr. Lindkort further stated that any complaints about code violations should be directed through the Roses Point Village Board. I would ask the village board to please enforce the zoning code and prohibit non-residential parking in the residential law at 62 State Street.
I'd like to ask John Cooper a question if I could. Is there a problem over there, John, as far as the parking? I mean, it does always seem like there's a straight car in there, you know?
Well, it's a lot of those couple cars in there. I think the problem being, the gist of what I got was the, the hockey club held a skating supper over there and I guess they all parked over there. But, you know, they, they, all they do is they ask us to use the hall for their fundraiser. And I, that's the funny deal because Tim's kids play hockey and that was a fundraiser for them. So I have no idea why they're raising such a fuss, but nevertheless, that's the way it is.
I don't even think they charged the hockey club either.
They charged them, yeah.
Yeah.
But the people, they, you know, they ran out of parking because it was apparently a really successful event. I was out of town, I was in Virginia, but they said they would park all the places over there. So that's what's actually, I guess they got, well, I can't say they blamed them.
So it's not something that goes on all the time?
No, once in a while those cars are there, but we got our garage over there, we got our stuff stored in there. So we're not out there all the time. All the stuff that is stored in the garage over there was upstairs on the legion, but we're going to take that building down, so that's what we're using that garage for storage over there.
I wonder, John, if we just put up the sign, you know, no parking?
Well, I think that the best thing would be to, I think we should, I think the board's just send a legion letter saying there'd be no parking over there. Make it do it, and we'll just have to enforce it, that's all.
All right, the board?
I think it's a good place to start. Yeah.
Want a motion again?
No.
We did receive a letter from the town of Moores. There's a problem carrying with the swimming program. With the swimming program this year because of renovations being done to the swimming pool at the school. And they sent a notice to the mayor and Moore that the town of Moores is recommending a no vote regarding the swimming program for this year. The town board has discussed the costs and it would double the expense to have the swimming program in the town of Shaysee. Apparently, they were going to transport the children to Shaysee to use their pool, but Moores is saying it's a definite no. The next item came from Mike Tate, who are chairing the shared services committee, and it was in reference to that $5,000. He was requesting the $5,000, which already has been amended into the list of bills, so. The last item I have was, once again, the Jeff Wyon Memorial Motorcycle Ride is scheduled for Sunday, August 17, 2008. Hopefully, we will be able to use the Roses Point Civic Center as a starting point again this year. As you know, this is a very worthy cause in benefit of the Children Miracle Network for our children of the North Country. Any help you would be able to give us with this approval would be very much appreciated. Please feel free to call later anytime you have any questions. Thanks again for your anticipated help. That's from Tom Karen, the right board.
I'll make a motion to allow the Jeff Wyon Memorial Motorcycle Ride to start here on Sunday, August 17, 2008.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion?
Yes, very good cause.
Do we need to work out anything involving refreshments this year or anything?
No.
Is everybody agreeing or?
That's worked out between them two, but I, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're going to do it.
Oh, no?
Maybe it's a little, uh, hockey ball? Yeah.
Okay.
Two of them better get together.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I got.
Getting back to the town of Moores thing, I think we should discuss this, board.
Oh, yeah. About the swimming program.
Is on the, you're, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll.
We can discuss it now though, I mean, I just.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. It's fine. Okay, reports of the mayor and the Board of Trustees. And a little lengthy tonight for me because I got all the appointments. So Deputy Mayor will be Brian Jefferson, term of one year. Deputy Treasurer will be Rebecca DeSo for a term of one year. The Attorney, Thomas M. Renee, for one year. Acting Villages Justice, John Favreau, one year. Budget Officer, Arson Letourneau, one year. Historian, Donna Racine, one year. Youth Commissioner, Janice DiLuterno, one year. Zoning Board Office, Bill Timlinkort, five years. Planning Board Member, Shirley Hall, five years. Clerk to the Zoning Board, Carol Henfield, one year. Clerk to the Planning Board, Jerry Favreau, one year. The depository will be T.D. Bank North and Champlain National Bank. And the official newspaper will be the Press Republican. And I don't think, do we have to have any vote on that? Carol, I don't think so.
No.
Why didn't that, why didn't that vote?
Do you all make a motion to accept the mural appointments for 2008, 2009?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Excuse me. The commission to share police and public, police and judicial will be Kelly Penfield and John Mertz. And the first person named is a chairman. Code, fire codes and S-E-Q-R-S, John Mertz and Brian Jefferson. Streets and sidewalks, Brian Jefferson and Kelly Penfield. Water system, Brian Jefferson and Frances Baker. Sewer system, Kelly Penfield and John Mertz. Electrical system, Brian Jefferson and Frances Baker. Flood control, storm sores, Frances Baker and Brian Jefferson. Personnel insurance, Kelly Penfield and John Mertz. Handing and development, Frances Baker and Kelly Penfield. Shared services, municipal shared services, John Mertz and Frances Baker. Civic, center parks, beautification, shade trees, Frances Baker and Kelly Penfield. And library, historian and senior in youth, John Mertz and Brian Jefferson. The procurement policy. You don't, you don't want to know this? Can I have final word on that one, Colonel? The procurement policy, whereas Section 104B, and I'm not going to read all this because there's nothing changed that I know of. Do we, I got to ask Harson this, do we go with the new state law on this? Because the state has raised those limits.
Mine all except that it's passed yet.
Because the budget hasn't been passed.
You might be right.
They've been talking about it, but they don't think it's passed yet.
Okay, all right, just, you'll touch it or this?
We'll amend it when they, you know, when they do.
Very good. And just to, this is purchase contracts over 10,000 and public work contract over 20,000. Goods purchased from agencies from blind or subtle handicap pursuant to Section 105b, state financial law. These are, what is?
Those are the exceptions.
The exceptions, yeah. Yeah, okay, estimated amount of purchase contract, 500 to 2999 dollars, two verbal quotes. Excuse me. I got a set of signs since I'll give to anybody. 3,000 to 9,999 dollars, says three written fax quotes or written request for proposals. And that is for purchase contracts. Estimated amount of public work contracts, 500 to 2999 dollars, two verbals. 3,000 to 4,000, 999, written fax quotes, three. 5,000 to 19,999, three written fax quotes or written request for proposals. And that is, we extend that. We need a motion on this, Harson? The investment policy for the village. Designated depositors are in red, T.D. Bank North and Champlain National Bank. I'm okay.
There's a big change without you.
No, it's the same. Yeah, there's no change in that. We have no money to invest.
Says motions no longer need require a second under general rules of procedure.
Rules and procedures of meeting of the Board of Trustees, and nothing has changed with that except if anybody votes voting in quorum, has to. if anybody votes, voting, yeah, in quorum, has to be three of us here for a quorum. Uh, the mayor or any trustee upon notice, the entire board may call a special meeting. Executive sessions in New York State Public, New York State Public Officers Law, chapter one oh five, tells you what you can handle for and what you can't. Order of business, hasn't changed, same. Okay, any members of the public or any public official are allowed to tape or video, record public meetings. And no recording is allowed during an executive session, that includes the clerk. Now, that's the rules of procedure, schedules of meetings. Hasn't changed, it's the first and third Monday of the month. And there is exceptions, holidays, it moves to Tuesday, like May thirtieth is Memorial Day, so it moves, no, May thirtieth is the end of the, end of the fiscal year, so we have a meeting at four fifteen at the village office. September sixth, which is Labor Day, has moved to Tuesday. September first is Labor Day, so September second is Tuesday. January twentieth is Martin Luther King Day, and that goes to Tuesday. February seventeenth is President Day, and that goes to Tuesday. And then Wednesday, March eighteenth, is the day after the election, uh, and that is at four fifteen at the village office, and, uh, all meetings start at seven o'clock, except otherwise stated.
I need permission on that one, the board, 'cause that has to be published in the press.
I'll make a motion to allow the clerk to publish a schedule of regular meetings for two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion? Need no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Whereas the village board, the board of trustees and the village of Roses Point is determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement for officers and employees of the village who use personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Therefore, we result, the board of trustees shall approve reimbursement of such officers and employees at the rate of forty cents per mile. This resolution shall take effect immediately. And I put that in form of a resolution.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote.
I have a question.
Okay.
How do we arrive at that figure? Just curious. Oh, you snuck it up on us, Arsène. It's so unlike you.
That's more than they give for federal, I think.
What?
Oh, yeah.
'Cause it was thirty-six last year, I was just curious.
We didn't touch it last year, so we're gonna do two years of one year.
Okay.
The way gases and everything.
Oh, I'm just, I was just curious how we came up with that figure, that's all.
In case gas goes to ten dollars and all.
It can always be amended again.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the power rate is fifty and a half cents, so.
It's fine, I, though it's not a criticism, I was just curious, that's all. If you said it's so unlike you, Arsène, surprised you didn't lower it.
Carol?
Yes, I know.
Okay. Okay, trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Baker?
Aye.
And the mayor will try. Okay. Okay, uh, who was doing the water rate?
We're asking, you know?
No, we passed the sewer one, now it's the water. You have to amend the water.
It's number eight.
Red, yeah, my list is long.
I know.
Whereas the board of, the board of trustees of the village of Roses Point, seeing it didn't necessary to amend the water rates in order to balance the two thousand eight, two thousand nine budget, and I'm not gonna go through all this thing, I've already said upfront what we're gonna do, where increasing water by two dollars and four cents and we're decreasing sewer, sewer. But that's what we're doing, we're increasing it, and that's a resolution. And I need somebody to put that in form of a motion.
I'll put that in form of a motion to amend the water rates for two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Second, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion, board?
Do we modify class A, Arsène?
All classes have been modified.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. And outside of that, we'll just double the above rates.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? There's been no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, okay. The village budget is done, the sewer rate's done. Okay, what is the four eighty-five B program? Is that the trees?
No, no, it's their request from, um, this right here. It's the one, it's allowing for the taxing of buildings and assessments, the assessments.
I got this, I just, I hadn't seen this. Oh, that's the one for, what's the tax exemption for?
That's true.
The businesses? And this is, uh, so that we can, to investigate this? Or to adopt it?
To open up a discussion.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I guess there's more information available at my com, and I think it's to see whether or not we want to investigate it. As part of what came out, I know in our discussion, um, I don't remember, it was John Berch and myself, and I don't remember who it was, I don't think it was at the last board meeting, but it was at some meeting that we were at, we were discussing, I think with Arsène, about, um, some of the property owners, let's say on Upper Montgomery Street, who are sprucing up their buildings, that while they're not eligible necessarily for the Main Street grant, if business owners who aren't necessarily in the downtown wish to get some sort of an exemption or some sort of assistance, that there is some, something available for them, it may not be the grant money that, that the Main Street program is allowing for, but at least it would be something that we could do for them as, as an incentive to, or as an assistance to them, um, in fixing up their buildings or, or making a further investment in their business property. So. That's what, you remember, John, you and John and I, Arsène, were talking about it? I think it bears investigating.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, I guess the, it might be.
It's not, I, I don't think it amounts to a huge cost for the village, but it might be something that would be very worthwhile for some of our business owners, if they wish to take advantage of it, so.
So, can we go forward with this?
I think we should at least investigate it. I, I don't, I think it's a very good idea. I think anything we can do, especially in this climate, as we were talking about before, to, to help out some of our business owners, I think it's a worthwhile, it's, and as it says, it, you know, the, the decrease in the property taxes, there is no decrease for the village, it's just that there's an exemption on increased assessment and the taxes that would result from that.
All right, then we'll contact the, the conference of mayors and see what information is going on, and discuss it in our front of the meeting. Okay, next item, New York State Power Authority Tree, Tree Power Program. Excuse me. I think we had an ad in the paper stating, uh, the Power Authority every year, uh, through the Nursery and Landscape Association invites you to participate in the two thousand eight Tree for Power Program. This program is designed to help New York Power Authority Municipal Electric and Rural Cooperative Electric Customers to improve the environment, conserve energy, and beautify their local communities. You buy one, you get one free. And reduce, and some, and you get, if you buy a, a small tree, in diameter, you'll get one free. If you buy the bigger tree, they'll give you seventy dollars towards that tree. So instead of a hundred and fifty dollars for the tree, take seventy off, it'll cost you eighty dollars for the second tree.
It's still expensive for a tree.
That's what they go for, though, I guess, Marlene. I guess that's what trees go for, though, 'cause I-
These are nursery trees.
Yeah.
And the trees are available, I don't know.
Jay Mybilly brought one and donated it to the sports department here, and he said it was like two hundred and fifty dollars for that tree. That's what they sell them for.
We paid him seventy dollars for one die. We did replace it, but it also died, so.
How many years ago, though?
No, I'm not that old.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's, that, that, I guess that's what they go for.
Anyway, some of the trees that are in Illinois, power out of spruce, Norway spruce, red maple, sugar maple, uh, flowering, flowering choice, whatever that is, honey locust, and little leaf, lin, linen, whatever that is, realtilla. And the diameter is two point five, two and a half inches diameter is the one fifty, and the inch and a half is seventy dollars. Uh, I believe that, uh-
We have a deadline of Monday, and I, I have received some calls from a few of the residents there.
Uh, I, last year we spent what, Arsène? I know, I wish Brian was here tonight, because he wants to plant some trees on Maple Street this year. So, Mr. Pelkity is gonna have to come up with some money by Monday.
We'll make up for some of the trees we lost in the ice storm, too.
'Cause that, that tree is pretty barren now.
Well, I'd like you to have the electrical line, so it's a really, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Let it go.
So I will, we will talk with him tomorrow. Okay? Guess what? That's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. Uh, the first item on my agenda tonight is to make a resolution, I'll make a motion to allow Mayor Rivers to be the accredited delegate for the MEUA semi-annual meeting in Syracuse. And I don't have the date.
Fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
Fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth of May.
Of April.
April, excuse me. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second item on my agenda tonight, I'd like to make a motion to request an executive session to discuss library personnel. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
Trustee Penfield?
Aye.
Trustee Baker? And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, and the third item on my agenda tonight is, uh, I'll just read this real quickly, uh, there's, well, I'll paraphrase it, there's repairs being made to the northeastern Clinton Pool, won't be able to be used this year, for the Red Cross Summer Swim Program. So the, the option is to use the pool at the Shaysie Central School, and of course, there's gonna be extra additional costs for pool rental, not to exceed twenty dollars an hour in transportation. Says in the previous years, we budgeted for thirty-five hours of pool use per week for six weeks. The number of children participating would determine the hours the pool would be needed. The cost for the lifeguards would remain the same, which would include a small annual pay increase. They're asking the village board if they would be able to support additional funding for approximately eleven hundred to two thousand dollars for the summer swim program, for the two thousand and eight summer recreation program. I don't know if we have the money yet.
Well, that's what we were talking about earlier.
So, but that's in addition to what we already have budgeted in that?
Yeah.
'Cause we have twenty-one, twenty-five budget for next, for this summer. But that, are you reading that as in addition to?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why would the school not be allowed, if the construction, the wall goes up like this, a kid get up in the front and go into the pool and come out? Why would the construction interfere with that?
They're actually repairing the pool itself.
The whole, the pool itself?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, the pool's gonna be shut down.
That's what they're doing, that major repairs to do in the pool, and the heating system for the pool.
I talked to Jan about this, and, um, there is money in this, left over in this year's youth commission budgets, or youth program budgets, that we could use towards that if, if needed. We would just roll over from this year's budget to next year's budget. But a lot hinges on, you know, the other missed power, you do, I guess.
Jan and I were talking one day also about, it, it would probably be a very good idea to try to get Moores, Village of Champlain, Town of Champlain, Village of Roses Point, somehow together, even if we're on some kind of a conference call or something, so we could all put our heads together, because we do have this letter from Moores, and it's a very worthwhile program, I think, especially with the lake here, the, the, the swimming program is really, really important for the youth of the entire North Country. But that would be my suggestion, if somehow we could contact Linda for that, and, and have her get ahold of Tammy from Champlain, and I'm not sure who the Moores Recreation Leader is, but-
Jan is not available.
I know, so I wondered maybe if Linda would be able to, to try to get everyone together. So then we could settle it once and for all, so that, because I'm having trouble getting a handle on what our additional cost would be. Especially if, if what Moores has said in their letter is true, that they're not going to participate, then do we then assume a higher cost if they're not?
I think we need more information.
I think part of, part of the thing about going around two is, is that, and I could be wrong, but, you know, like maybe the Village of Roses Point's students could participate. And, you know, the people out there, more than be able to participate, but I don't, you know, I don't know, I don't think there's enough information out there to, I think that's a nice way to do it, you said, to have some kind of a joint meeting or something.
Just so at least we all-
I don't think everybody that's on the same, on the same cart.
I think we're all trying to make a decision on the same issue, but we all have different information, so it's becoming somewhat difficult.
I would say it gets, get with the others and see what we can come up with. Let's study that.
Carol, do you think you could call Linda?
I can do that.
And then see what the circumstance is with everyone else, especially in Jan, Jan's absence.
Well, we don't take any action on that tonight, there's, recommend out.
That it?
Yes, that's it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Penfield.
Uh, the first item I have on my agenda tonight is a discussion for a work session on the revitalization projects. I know we had a project update meeting, I think it was the first part of March, George, if I'm not mistaken, very early in March, and, um, many of the board members were not able to attend, and I believe that Melissa, Melissa rather, has asked us to try to schedule a work session next Monday on April fourteenth, so that we can have an update on where things stand prior to the construction season this year, with what's outstanding and left on the waterfront, and where things are with the Main Street program grants and those types of things. But I'm not sure, Juris, did you know she had a time of day in mind?
She had not. I'll be out of town when we do, we have Boston. Fourteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know whether there's an alternate date that's been selected, Carol, do you know at all?
Well, give Melissa a call tomorrow. Um, we're still scheduled for the fourteenth, and see where we can go from there.
Okay. Okay. I'm off next week, too. We have, um, I have a meeting already the morning of the fourteenth, but in the afternoon, we could, we could meet. So, really, any time that day would be fine.
Okay.
But if we wanted to late afternoon, if that's more convenient for other people who might want to attend, that's fine and well, so. Just any, you know, any time, I'd say after like five hundred and one o'clock.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. The second item I have is a report on the annual wastewater treatment plant inspection report. The letter that we got from the DEC is addressed to Tommy Reed, Dear Mr. Reed, enclosed is the inspection report for the annual wastewater treatment plant inspection conducted March nineteenth, two thousand and eight. In general, the facility was found to be well-maintained and operating within its permit limits. They did provide two additional comments for, um, the information of the people at the sewer plant in regards to the In regard to the water filtration plants discharge of filtered backwash water and divotaceous earth into the sanitary sewer, the village notified the New York State DEC, um, in February of two thousand and five, that the village would perform annual video inspection and line cleaning to ensure the sewer line is kept clear. In this regard, please update this office with the status of the two thousand and seventh annual inspection and cleaning of the water plant sewer line. And number two, um, has to do with influent concentrations of BOD and TSS being measured at the plant have generally, generally been less than one hundred milligrams per liter. For two thousand and seven, the averages were eighty-five and eighty-six milligrams per liter, and, um, they're just asking for a confirmation that the samples that they did are representative. They're asking that a few additional weekly influent composite samples be collected, and, um, the results of the samples could then be compared to the samples collected at the existing location. So just to keep them updated on a couple of, of additional items, but, um, again, as with our water plant, generally, the sewer plant is, is running very well, and it's good to see that, again, with their annual inspection, things are good, so. I haven't had a chance to talk to Tommy Reed, um, the letter was received on the third, but I'll get in touch with him to see whether or not there's anything that he needs us to be aware of, but I'm sure, it sounds like things are going fine, so. Here's another thing off the list for two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
Um, I also have tonight a travel request, which came in this afternoon. It's for Scott Bechar from the Police Department to, um, attend a police training in Albany on the fifteenth. He'll be leaving at five o'clock in the morning and returning at four o'clock in the afternoon. Would like to use the village vehicle if it's available?
Doesn't.
Pardon me?
Doesn't.
Okay, so we'll have to get back to him on that, so he'll be.
I think he can use the dural.
He could, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yep, so I'll, I'll check with Mike on that tomorrow, and, um, the only thing that's going to cost us will be his meals. This is a required, um, E-Justice New York Terminal Agency Coordinator Training Session that he is required to go to, and so hopefully it'll be productive for Scott, so I'll make a motion that we allow Scott to travel to that training next week in Albany.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote with your usual sign of aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carried.
And the last thing I have tonight is to request an executive session to discuss the CSEA contract negotiations.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Baker. And the mayor votes aye.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you. Trustee Baker, any words of wisdom tonight? Welcome to the board.
Thank you. How's your first night so far?
Learned a lot, isn't it? I'll have some information of mine to park this next month, hopefully. I don't know, it's a rather, we're not gonna.
Takes a while, takes a few meetings, but, Roger, just ask.
Carol?
I have nothing.
Our senator? Open a meeting to the public at this time, anybody wishing to address the board may do so.
I had a question, but I forgot what it was.
You got the same thing I got. Oh, God, I can't remember anything, I guess.
Something you were referring to.
Must have been about the sewer plant.
Well, Marlene, you had your chance. I close this, the second.
Well, wait a minute, wait, I know, can you arrange for, uh, a few buckets of dirt to be brought in on the road on Smith Street by mine band blocks, and there's one further up, there's a rut about like this, and they paved the road, for some reason, that got, when it got dug up, it didn't get put back even. Last year, the post office, the mailbox, the mail, got hung up, she came in, used my phone, called for help, so, and then this year, the fellow doing the mail, the paper, the day was so icy, dropped into that, and it hit my mailbox, so I got a problem.
I'm sure that can be taken care of, then.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. It's a small thing, but for me to go find some dirt somewhere in the area, that's not long.
Anybody else? I'll take a motion for adjournment, or recess, sorry.
For recess?
Recession.
I'll make a motion for recess.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried or in recess for five minutes? Yeah, and, uh, that's, uh, fifty-five minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for coming, too.